Good to go?
I think so.
We can open the meeting, sir?
Sure.
So why don't we open the meeting now? Call the meeting to work?
The first order of business should be to grant Beth his privileges.
Beth, can you hear me okay?
I can hear you. Can you hear me, Scott?
Loud and clear. So you were gonna say something about why you're remote?
Yes, I am currently in Grants Pass, Oregon, and unable to be in two places at once. I'm here for 10 days, and so I'd like to participate by Zoom if that is allowed.
Yes.
What do we need to do to allow that?
Nothing.
Okay?
Nothing.
Thank you, Beth.
You guys are all set. Law allows remote access as long as we have a quorum, physical quorum here, which we do. And you have all the rights and privileges as a voting member of the board as well.
Alrighty, thank you.
All right, where are you gonna go first?
Uh, let's see. Why don't we start off with the department heads?
Correct.
Sounds good.
Chief Cradon, why don't you lead us off today?
And are we expecting Sam?
No, Sam. Beth, I can't hand you one of these.
Okay. That would be a trick.
We'll have a coffee for you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so since the last second's meeting on the May 20th, we've had 12 incidents, one arrest, 130 citations, two accidents, 645 calls for service, and state police responded to 11 calls for service for us. We've had four hours of miscellaneous online training. I will be taking my second half of the firearms training in July. July 8th, our new policies will be going into effect. I've already handed them out to the officers to start reading them. And all the officers have taken their Taser recertification course for this year. And obviously, the NASCAR races next weekend.
Sure.
That's all I have since last second.
That's it?
That's it.
What, 645? What do you do on those calls?
So a call for service is anytime we get a call from dispatch or a call coming into the PD, we open up a call for service. That could be an animal complaint. It could be a traffic stop that the officer initiates. It could just be something as simple as a tree down in the road that an officer responds to. So it's anything that an officer has to respond to or do something to. So we've had 645 calls that an officer had to do something.
Is that normal?
Um, it's hard to say what's normal because it depends on the officer's activity as well. So it depends on how many traffic stops he has. Those are also calls for service. We're gonna watch. It is, it can be. But again, like I said, some of them are simpler. It's just answering questions over the phone. Depends on what they are. Some are time-consuming, some are not.
Chief, I'd have a question too, please, about citations, 135 citations. What does a citation consist of?
They're just warnings, whether it be speed, inspection, registration, stop sign violations, some type of moving violation typically.
Those are moving, okay. And does that seem unusual or is that in the norm?
No, that doesn't happen when you have... It's average when you have officers that are actually helping, able to be on the road and not stuck in an office.
Okay. Good. It's good to know. Thank you.
Any else?
No.
Okay. Close, chief?
Oh, wait, one second. Are, at this time, are we going over the job descriptions or is that another item, not for, while the chief is sitting in front of us?
So the job descriptions are for you guys to review. If you have questions or concerns about them, make note and we'll bring those up at a future meeting.
Perfect. Will do. Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you.
Chief Kamash?
All right, good afternoon. Hi, Beth, how are you?
I am well, thank you.
Um, to date, 191 emergency calls for assistance. We're still running way above 2023, same period, 35%. No rhyme or reason for that. It's no surprise. I started playing with some numbers today. My personnel costs are 35% over last year as well, or actually 35% over budget. So we're running 30... Anytime we go on a call, we have volunteers come in, they create a siphon, and then everything goes to that fuel, wear, and tear in the fire trucks. So it was, it was fine to see that being stressed a little bit. So my job to manage that. So just, just making you aware. In the last month since the last time we met, we had two large propane leaks in Laurin that we went to, or second due there. One of them was a five-hour event. The yellow was a little bit short of duration, but two large, two propane, underground propane tanks that were shared by construction equipment, so we assisted them on those events.
You can just let them leak out, or?
Excuse me?
What do you do with them?
Uh, we control, we direct the vapors away, away from ignition sources, on different strategies. We used to do that, and then basically, uh, did a tank. But if you have two baskets, it freezes, it freezes up and blocks up. So it's just, it's the whole minority of things we need to do to control that free beast like that, preventing it from finding ignition source.
Yeah.
It's just heavier than air, so. On the town beaches, we have a training event with all the port beaches, all the signs, and life preservers, and all of those things, so we're controlling our port beaches just in case for the weather coming in. Under fire prevention, we worked the elementary school this month. We, they did a whole school evacuation drill. They had the evacuation of a remote site, so we coordinated with them to do that. And we did our monthly fireworks, I mean, fire line drill, fire, yeah. Fire line drills, top fireworks event, July 5th. We will be staffing with two personnel. State law says that you need to have a fire truck and a certified firefighter on duty the minute the, the, the trailer full of fireworks pulls into the lot. That's usually around 2:30, 3 o'clock in the afternoon. And so an hour after the last fireworks have shot off, so it's usually around 11 o'clock. So we have two firefighters working out of it. I'll arrange my schedule right to come to town that night also to meet the, the guy, the lead pyro guy setting it off and all that stuff, and kind of do one review of the thing before they, they shut it off. And then making sure the boundaries are set for the site, so I'll be here that night.
Same location.
Yeah, same location. And working with Brooklyn Fire, they were putting on a circus in July down there, so making sure that he gets what he needs from us and making sure the areas are very safe and do what he wants to do.
You gonna do a high wire after?
Not quite sure. It's been a top month for apparatus repairs. For almost a week period, I had two newest water, water tanker, one, and engine two out of service. They both had been towed to Concord. We're in there items, nothing, nothing, uh, in the area of wear, there items. And that left, left us almost a week relying on our 1996 engine three that I don't have a lot of faith in, but that was the only coverage in town for water. I was concerned, but we made it work. We made it work, so. To have the tanker and the engine go down, it's a week that have significant repairs. And you have significant downtime, and that caused significant, about a week downtime, it was, was pretty concerning, so. They're fixed, they're both back in service. Next weekend, Amsterdam Motor Speedway is also in NASCAR. We are staffing all three events. We have a fire truck with three personnel each day, 12 hours each day. Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, different operational objectives for them crews. And I will be in town on Friday and probably on Sunday also for part of that race. I'll be available in the evening. Our grant, our 2022 radio grant that we got, $80,000 federal grant, that project, the, the, the order, radio order is finally coming in. We're starting to trip away at getting that done, so hopefully by the end of summer, that's all done, those paid, and we're ready to start using reliable communications equipment. Day of 2023, as I told you, I put in the grant for about $30,000 for housing appliances. Still haven't heard there, but I'm still in contact with our Washington delegation on a bimonthly basis to kind of massage that and hopefully we can get that money. So we'll take our right budget to purchase that. And most recently, as I talked to you about allowing our paramedics, we have two on the department, possibly three and four more coming under their, their level of training would allow us, we'd help to get access to controlled substances. I work with Concord Hospital, Dr. Rick, and a couple other people to be able to get that. And as you can probably imagine, it's a lot of red tape. In simple terms, it allows people with the highest level of emergency medical training, which is our paramedics, to, to utilize drugs to, to, you know, minimize pain, discomfort, and save lives. There's no other department in the 35 department capital area region that has this agreement, but last week we signed into a control substance agreement with Concord Hospital, which was gonna allow us to carry controlled substances. Once we get the inventory procedures in place and the lock boxes and all that stuff, it's what permit, permit it can allow. And that's a, that's a big accomplishment, and I'm proud of that. And that's gonna save lives and reduce pain and suffering in the future.
Great.
No cost to the town either.
Well, it's got a lot of time covered.
Yeah, well done, chief.
Thank you.
That's all, again.
I have a couple of questions if, if I can weigh in from this, from the West Coast. Thank you, chief. Do you have any special provisions for the heat this week? I mean, it seems like just recently we were worried about people with power going out and cold, but it's going to be, could easily get to be 100 degrees on Wednesday. We're trying to make provisions for the farmer's market, but do you have any special staff? Or does the town have any provisions in case somebody's overheating and needs to get cool?
No plans to bring additional staff on. I've been in touch with the state emergency operations center. They are ramping up and, you know, basically, if, if there's something I need, a cooling station or whatever, we can organize that and get that going, but we have no plans on bringing extra staff. And you've just gotta kind of monitor day by day. But resources, that'd be basically one phone call, one text, and I get the resources we need in town.
Okay, great. Do we ever have any, anybody call who say, like, they've got a large animal that's overheating? Do you ever have to worry about that?
We've never had that. We've, we've assisted the large animals, you know, out of, out of predicaments that they got themselves into.
Right, right.
Off of that, but if we ask to call and go with down a large animal, we'd be happy to help.
Okay, thank you. My other question was about fireworks. So you have all kinds of coverage for the night of the town fireworks. Do you make any special provisions or put any noticing out to private citizens who are going to be shooting fireworks all over the place? Notice if it's especially high fire time or, or anything else that they need to know?
So also during that night, the fifth on Saturday night, I'll be in town myself. We'll, we'll make a posting or two on social media, but other than that, we really don't put anything out. We'll have two members on duty that night for the fireworks and just monitoring things. And when calls come in, we'll just take them, so. There's usually a non, there's usually a non-issue with that. I think the police are probably busier than us with the nuisance calls or people complaining about their neighbors shooting out fireworks. My assumption is they're probably busier, but. So we work hand in hand with the vendor that the town hires to shoot out fireworks. And in my opinion, there's no better vendor. He's outstanding. He really is. He puts out a good amount of money to the town.
Good. Okay, thank you.
Yeah. Anything else? John, look at it?
No.
Sir? Thanks, chief.
Thank you, chief.
Chief, I'll catch up with you on that. Three-time me, you know.
Okay.
We're talking about that.
All right, all right, thank you.
I'll, I'll give you a call.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, yeah. Come on down, please.
Thank you, thanks. Thank you, I appreciate that, knowing that I have a high board of trustees meeting coming up. So, getting right into it. We are RSVP'd for the Right to Know Seminar, Cal. I've made everyone aware of the time change, so it will be very Board of Trustee Rich tomorrow. I want to thank, again, the town for use of the town hall. It's working beautifully. Thank you for moving the screen. I could tell it had telltale candy construction, so it, it worked out beautifully. And I just made some modifications. And that, the amp that you provided, I don't know where that came from, but it's much better than mine. So I will, I mean, there are plans afoot in the next few years for a library expansion. But you know what? In the meantime, this is working great. So I really appreciate the cooperation on that. The bathrooms are fabulous. I've been supplying the paper products, but I really appreciate it because I utilize it a lot. It's a beautiful building. So thank you for that. We are in high gear for summer reading, Charles' last day of school. We've gone through a lot of our summer reading promotion. Keep in mind that we offer 398 programs a year. 26 of them are in July, so this is really where we try to serve communities as we can through our young readers. So we're in hill swing on that one. We have some changes to our adult programming, and I think we're pretty much covered for the fair and the time around the fair. I know Cal and Ken and I had talked a little bit about book sale being over there. I have talked to Bay State Books, who is a new company, and they're gonna facilitate the removal of the books from town hall, so that is well underway. The biggest thing that I have to discuss is the trustees have decided this year to close on Juneteenth, which is Wednesday, and I'm looking at farmer's market. So the library is closed, and I know farmer's market is aware of that. And so I'm assuming farmer's market will use the town hall for bathrooms.
Julie's checking on that, and I know that it is a thought. We're actually considering canceling the market just because of the heat, but there are two vendors at least who really want to still come. So that's still under discussion, and when, when they, that should be figured out today because we have to let everybody know. So Julie will be in touch with whomever to try and figure out if there's a bathroom we can use in the center.
That would be great, only because I'm also on the Shaker Village board, and we just canceled our Thursday outdoor event to, to heat. So I, I kind of felt like that was coming down the pike. Also, it is closed, and Juneteenth just happens to be on a Wednesday. So I feel badly about that. It's a little awkward, especially when you use the kitchen for food prep sometimes. It just won't be available, but it sounds like we might need to not even have to worry about it.
So that, that's fine. The, the farmer's market board is well aware of that the library is closed and attempting to make other plans.
Thank you. Okay, perfect.
Thanks. Thanks for having us on your radar.
You're welcome. I was just gonna use this venue to ask you if I could allow, if I could just key the door to, to let them in the town hall, but it sounds like that's all working. Okay. And our circulation and collection reports are up. People are using their library. And we're just doing good things. Do you have any questions for me?
I do. Nope. Beth?
No, I'm all set. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Rachel.
Thank you.
John?
We have Odin back, trying to catch up with Moe.
I saw him the other day.
Odin seems to be everywhere mowing. He's got quite the regime going.
Yeah. Staten, I track for paving, been in touch with, we wanna get going. Best for price on the Azro, Culver, do with that. The work. Rating as it allows, raiders not happy with me, seems a clutch is. But the Packers taking a lot of more time, at least on Thursdays. I would hope with the new job sting, you know, postings, maybe we need to add a CBL back to that.
Yep, and I talked to the fire chief today, and he is gonna put out his membership if they want to earn some extra money. They have a CBL that they can come in and, and help the Packers. You know, during the week, you know, we have.
I was just worried, where I was the only one.
Yeah.
So I just reached out this morning, is it available? I, I hope, I hope David will be back.
Yeah.
David? He's here. He's out on injury.
Yeah, I, I need backup in Anthony, Florida.
He's sending truck fire down to Manchester. Get a couple of drivers, we have a couple houses going down. I know it's a new issue, a, you know, emergency for the April 3, 5. Operation, you know, 14 roads at various times closed, but really have no faith in.
We have, we have that, this, uh, house road, issue of source with, trying to call again, which they're done, they're all good. John has taken pictures of it. They, part of that one was to repay the paper, if needed. And it does need, they're getting a revised, even company, and we talk with that. We don't take the tract out, or if we just table. Yeah, I think what John, that didn't seem like.
Not bad. That's what we normally do. We're trying, their job was last spring, I don't know why they're pushing so hard.
Yeah. Red that's up there is long. Part of the recent one. We allow, we allow everyone to use it while it's supposed to wait the spring, but they have. And they didn't work. It was where I couldn't tell was probably that caused the problem. Now the, they said their heavy truck is not, that lot of trucks.
Yeah, well, thanks, John. That's your.
I think I'm okay. I missed a lot of that. My sound is going in and out. I've still got great video, so I think I got the gist of that, so I'm okay. Thank you.
All, then, again, that's on. There are, there's no dealing, all those taxes are paid. Leans can be done, and he's been working on. I'm looking good for it. Good, excuse me.
Yeah. Okay, just stay down. What do you have? Oh. Joanna here. You guys, anybody else coming in?
Go player, yeah.
I'm not gonna.
Yeah, if you guys want to come up. Offer the first step for you?
Um, it's gonna be.
So that's, there's a piece of town road property. Maybe he has done some research on those two, and there's a note for those. Probably the best way to do it is to park to give them some history. You guys, they have three hours.
Those two lots?
Yeah.
Uh, one, one of them, I researched a little bit on the, on the taxes, so a lot of, well, it's got a sense of the name, but it's actually yeah, and it looks like someone had once bought it from the town, and then it's back in the town's hands. Um, but on both lots, we're actually hoping that those could just be transfers like the law about again, Paul Gilington, because, um, the one on Fire Truck is really our worst road. Uh, we have no place on that road, um, to even put material. It's hard to maintain.
Strategically, and that's out in the association, I would literally be end of Friday, not like a spot for possibly, um, material. But that property also, what's the property that the well is on that we own?
Okay.
Um, the well itself. And that it's on, we don't own. That's kind of thinking of her story. Is it? It's kind of a weird, what hole in the information, but the, but it is. Not only a good strategic spot, or a, a terrible.
And no, no intention of getting, or even, I don't think we even need to count building on it for material. It's just one, one thing that we've talked about a little bit is the town, you guys will say, you know, we should help in there, what we can do, we feel like this is something where we could have some to, um, there's more for water to go anymore in the neighborhood. Um, and then the one on gravel lane is really protect that lot. Well, I say gravel lane, you guys wouldn't notice that.
This one is off of.
It's off the board, right on New Pond. That's the one that someone had bought, and it's back in your hands. And really, we just want to protect it. Yeah.
Yeah. The easement that goes into that, there's actually been a very small, like, canoe-sized but I think that connects to the property directly.
I mean, if you feel, you, you know, rather ask the butters first, if they wanted the spot to get it ahead of the butter, we just, we protect it from maybe a future person that presents season an opportunity there at, um, like I said, we're, we don't have a lot left to test and, uh, unlock anywhere.
Is that really on the water or is it on the gravel one? It is part of that pond.
Well.
Yeah, I was just saying, there's the two difficulties, as, as I'm sure you guys would know, with respect to the, first it was because of the, their title was probably back to the town.
No, we didn't want that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that's definitely a potential issue that, that you should be when it's, the owner of the property was unclear of the title.
Yes, so when we sold the property, town sold the property, tried to sell it a few years ago, and the people that bought it, the mortgage company could not find it, could not get a clear title. So it would have to be either a quiet title or a quick claim dish. And the town isn't, isn't going, going to do that. So the title had, there's a problem with the title of that property. And then the second property.
That's the one with the huge federal 351,772 dollars and 51 cents.
Crazy, man.
The owner, the owner, previous owner of that property had some legal issues with the federal government and was in prison and passed away in prison. So there's a lien that's outstanding, and we, we really don't know what to do with it at this point. We haven't had anybody interested in it, and we haven't taken any kind, any kind of steps to do anything about it. And again, lots are, are, town isn't losing a lot of tax money on either one of these lots, so that's why the town hasn't really taken any steps to do anything. Really taken any steps to do anything. So.
There a possibility of doing maybe like a gentleman's agreement or something is decided.
So uh, the one that, that has the unclear title. Um, I've talked with a couple of people about it. And. I mean, my, my thought would be that maybe the town could give some kind of agreement to. Sure for us to be able to use that, if you're just gonna use it for storage of materials or something like that.
That one we don't wanna touch.
But it would, but it would have to be at. If, if something were to come up, then the agreement would become null and void. Within thirty days or something like, you'd have to come up with some kind of language. That you would allow it.
And Ken, excuse me, didn't we also talk about, um, they could use it if it wasn't, make sure it's not cleared? I mean, it's clear enough for, for your purposes, I think, when we looked at it, but.
You wanted some material on it that can be easily.
We're trying to protect the.
And that's because, uh, you know. Most of those properties in there are because of their location that's, that's within the two hundred and fifty feet of the shoreline. If you're gonna stop trees, now you have to get a shoreline protection. Permit, so if you were able to do something without. You know, those kind of steps, then maybe the town would be interested in, in some kind of uh. Agreement that, again, it would have to be that. Uh, probably it would have to be able to cancel in thirty days, notice of either firing or something like that.
Talked about with the islands, where it just agreed that they wouldn't be sold.
So the island, and that's kind of a different story, the island is pretty clear that the town owns it and is not interested in selling it. Uh, with this, these other two properties, uh, particularly the one that the title isn't clear. It would suit your needs, and the town really isn't interested at this point, trying to spend money to find a uh.
Oh, understand.
A clear title.
Yeah.
And, and I don't know what it would cost to find.
And we clearly know, we know the association doesn't have that money to do.
Yeah.
But the other one, also, if it's going to be such a hassle and an expense for anybody. To try and buy that land and clear up the mess that's on it, it's going to sit undisturbed. For however long, correct? I can't imagine somebody walking into that and saying, oh yeah, let's try and figure this mess out. So, um, if, if the goal is to keep it empty and preserved, it seems like it's kind of. Doing it itself by the very complicated nature of the expense. So.
These issues.
Well, yes and no, cause we talked about how there was potential if, um, Sandy did buy the lot next to her, that if. The lot at the end of Nottingham ever sold, there was a, a series of town lots that would cross over and possibly. Someone with money could have come in, bought that whole road and cleared that lot on the water to have a private beach, so, I mean. Somebody with money can do anything.
Yes.
Has a. Motive for it or benefit from it, so.
I would think we could reconsider it if anybody ever came forward and just assume. Until a person was, you know, who wants to deal with that mess. Steps forward that it's just going to sit. And then. But that would, you know.
Could somebody else quit climate and try to get, like, just say it's been.
Unless they've been doing something with it.
Okay. Not that I understand the whole process, but I know that that was what Chicago was trying to do.
Yeah.
So I didn't know if that was something and, yeah, I didn't.
The, the town, the town is, it's pretty clear the town owns it. They took it for taxes, but the title going back is the problem. And a lot of mortgage companies will not. Uh, give loans if the title has problems with it. And that's what the previous people had a problem with.
Oh, but we wouldn't need a loan, right? I mean.
Correct, correct, yeah, yeah. I, I mean. It's, it's, I think it's just. Due diligence to know that the title is not clear on it.
But I got a question, if you don't mind. Would that affect everybody else's property that owns in Sherwood Forest?
By.
Like if there's a lawsuit.
There's a, there's a lien against it, you know what I'm saying? If there's a lien against that, would that affect? Cause I'm, I'm in the.
It's just, it's just, it's just that one piece of property, not the, not the one with the lien, the other guy's on the town.
Yeah, if, I mean, if someone really wanted, we could just have to turn.
Yeah, if you, if you took ownership of the one with the lien on it. That could be a problem in the future. But, but the one that the title isn't clear on, uh, if you took ownership of that, it would be a title issue at some point in the future. The association wanted to sell it or do something else with it.
Yeah, I know, I mean.
Yeah, we have no intention of selling it.
Yeah.
No, not as an association.
It'd be the same, same deal as what we did with the other.
Right.
Not a young property.
Yeah. Yeah, you're really looking to get preservation.
Correct.
Yeah. Like I said, there's not a whole lot left, any, like when we do our bills and we're sending out to the people, most people that don't beg. Have lots, those are all potentially buildable lots.
Yeah.
And that's, there's not a whole lot left that we can do.
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't know.
If you're, if you're still interested in, in that lot.
Yeah.
To, to take ownership of it, I think the selectmen can, can consider it. But if you're interested in it. As maybe some kind of a, a, an agreement to store things on it, you could do that. And the selectman might entertain that too, so.
Just to preserve it.
Yeah, that's our main goal, is just to preserve it and.
Friar Tuck was different, but obviously we're not gonna. Why do I feel like I do that and miss it? Sorry, guys.
No, nobody's there.
Yeah.
It's a staggering number.
Just so I remember correctly, the Friar Tuck is the title issue, the gravel lane is the, the lien issue with the.
Correct.
Oh wait, I thought it was the other way.
Uh.
Yeah, you could use.
On, on the note there, I thought it was the Friar Tuck one.
So one oh one sixty-two is the uh, title, unclear title issue.
Okay, so it's, so one oh two, the Friar Tuck one is the one with lien on it.
Yeah.
The government lien?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
You want.
I agree group?
Yeah.
I mean, the one at the end of the road there, the one on the water, I think there's, I mean, the worst case is someone comes back and fights it and we have to hand it over, right?
I, I, I really don't know, worst case scenario.
Yeah.
Um. Again, the town, we thought the title was clear. And apparently the mortgage or the title company found something. Seven years ago that the title, the town was not aware of.
But that's been another five years?
Yeah. Yeah.
Is there a timeframe? That someone has to.
I really don't know.
Yeah.
Uh, the, the, these land laws are confusing. At best, and I'm not an attorney, um, so I really, I really couldn't tell you.
Maybe we probably just go for just an agreement with the selectmen for now and.
It might, it, it might be the better way to go for now. And then. Maybe we can do some investigating and see what we can do.
So leave it at the moment that they can store, not clear anything, but store and use it for road materials and snow. Um. Pending. The clearing of the title at some future date.
If we even use it.
Yeah, we wouldn't even use it, cause that, yeah, that, we don't.
The one on gravel wouldn't matter. But the preserving would be the better.
Yeah.
The Friar Tuck one was the more of the material, but even then, that wasn't like a, you know, if you told us no, it wasn't. You know.
Understood, yeah.
It wouldn't kill the deal for us.
Yeah.
No, no, the, but the snow, there was only the smaller lot was for snow and road, and then the bigger lot on the water was the one with the giant scary lien on it.
No.
Oh, it is the other way around, geez, okay. Whichever one has big scary lien on it should, uh, you know, personally, I would think would, will leave that. To be, um. Leave it, and the other one, uh, personally, I would say if we can make an agreement that Sherwood Forest can use it for snow and road. Fine, and then, uh, at some point, someone's got to find, you know, make that title clear before we. Either give it away or try and sell it. If I'm following the conversation correctly, cause my sound is still breaking up.
Yeah, you, you're getting the, the gist of it, that's.
Okay, good.
Things get clear enough.
Okay, so we'll draw something up and ask you to take a look at it. We'll run it before the selectmen and you guys and make sure it's agreeable to all parties and then probably have you come in, uh. Next month and sign it. Yeah?
Yeah, sure. Can I ask you a couple of questions real quick while we're sitting here?
Yeah.
Um. The lot that goes from, um, Nottingham to Old Gilmoreton. Uh, we're actually gonna measure off the neighbor's lot, but if there's a opening, if that's on that, there's still a piece up there that's town on Old Gilmoreton. Um, that is, uh, looking over there, six house. I think there's a. What was that?
Think there'd be.
I think it's four. Six. Four, six, eight, ten, twelve, I think it's twelve, uh, twelve Nottingham behind it. There's an opening, it is opening in the stone wall there, and it might be the easiest way when we clear the trees to get into there before we have the, the uh, resources to move the rock wall. You guys have an issue if he goes in from there on that, if it is town, we're gonna measure it, but do you have any issue with him going in from there? Where it's already open in the stone wall?
Can you look?
Is it Brian?
I'm trying to find it here. It's by Brian's house, is that what you said?
It goes Brian, then Arnold, it goes Brian and Arnold. And then the Arnolds have a lot, and then there's the one that goes through, and then there's another one that's town that we didn't. We don't have, but there, we're not sure yet, we gotta measure it, but there's a, since we're here, I'm asking, there's an opening already in the rock wall there, which would be easier for Brian to go in and remove the trees. So we're asking if that's an issue. I'm not positive yet, we have to go.
That's part of my lot, Joanna.
The opening all the way down? I don't think, not, not where you have your trailer. It's a little bit further down.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Uh. Six, trying to think about.
Because, because I got the three front.
Yep.
And then the next one is the cut through that you're looking to work with.
Yeah, it's beyond that, it's beyond.
And then there's another lot over there that's behind that one.
And there's an opening there, yeah.
Okay, is that where you're looking?
Yeah.
Okay, before the, the seasonal people.
Yep.
Okay.
Before that.
Thank you.
Like to your knowledge, it's a town property?
Huh?
To your knowledge, that is town property.
To my knowledge, it was when I was working with Mandy three years ago.
Okay.
So that's what I knew.
Yeah.
Because we had purchased three years ago that ancillary property.
Okay.
Alright, that's when we had it, Deputy Chief.
Okay.
You wanna come up and show me? Yeah. Cause I got one on my phone too, that I snuck a photo with Mandy. So this is the one that you guys, the, the, the association wants right here.
It goes straight through.
Yeah, straight through.
Yep, goes straight through. Okay. So there's a house. I need to pull it up on my phone, sorry. Okay. It's alright, I packed my own.
Because he can go.
You wanna send me in Hawaii?
You know, we had the ability with the old system, but.
So this is my property here. We're discussing this property lately. Somebody owns this, I purchased that, and then that is. My property here, I purchased that, and then. This is the town that was there, there's a house there, and that's the lot that they're talking about.
This is the one that, that the.
The cut through.
Right, that, so that's that.
Right, so then.
You're talking about.
No, cause I own one and two.
Okay, so.
Twenty-one is in discussion tonight.
Okay, yeah.
Alright, so you're gonna go the other way.
Okay.
Yeah, if you're looking at the property. Off the road.
So this is the cut through here, there's a house there, you can see it, that's the property that Joanna is talking about, I believe, yes sir.
We have to measure, we're gonna try to measure off the, um, Arnold's. But since we're here, if it does.
Joanna, you talk about that one? One oh one, one hundred?
Yes.
Uh, that is.
Yeah, that one's town, since. Have the two.
I don't know, sir. Maybe because the town owns it?
She's got it up on the screen right now.
It is, uh.
Yeah, okay.
Ooh, thanks Cal, I see screen sharing.
Oh.
Perfect. Uh, wait.
So yeah, that long stretch that she has on the screen.
Yep.
Is the land that you guys gave us last year, and the one that she's got highlighted now is the one that Joanna's talking about.
Well, like I said, we're gonna measure it first and maybe, yeah, but, um, it looks like it's kind of borderline, so we wanted to see, but. It might be easier just to go in there to get to the property, cause we don't have the resources yet to move the rock wall. And Brian's gonna come this month and it's gonna be our first steps.
So what you're asking for Joanna is just permission to travel across or use, can, can move material and equipment across the edge of the town lot? Through.
Well, yeah, you might. Take a tree to get to the lot or two. That's what, it might take a tree or two down. Do you want, I could send an email with like pictures up there too, once we mark it off?
Yeah, I think we'd have to have something, um. I guess. The only thing is, if you're gonna be using that. Uh, probably have to talk to the road agent about. Going in and out of there, you know, something has to be done to the. That, that section of the.
You guys don't maintain that.
Yeah, it's privately maintained by them.
Privately maintained by us.
Okay.
The Congress will not come up. Well, it's right, yeah, they, they, no, nobody maintains that with us and our wallet.
Yeah, yeah.
Right at the Nottingham split, that's pretty.
Yeah. Yeah. That's time and. Money on our end.
Yeah.
Joanna, have a conversation with me about that ancillary property.
Yeah, okay.
The town doesn't, not even Sherwood Forest drops a stone on that section of road.
Right.
And we still pay our two hundred a year. So, they don't maintain it, the town doesn't maintain it, the, the patrons of that road maintain it.
Yep.
So the road agent's making us pull driveway permit for the driveway, I put it.
That's a conversation between you and the town, not me, but. We maintain it.
You maintain the road.
Yes.
Any, any new road typically has to have some kind of, uh, driveway permit.
Okay, well. Joanna, I have an existing easeway, that you know where I put my trailer?
Yeah.
Brian could probably sneak his stuff in there. And then cut through my ancillary property, because that's a lot of that's dead kilt, and he could probably access that property.
Okay.
We'll have a conversation at. Right by it later.
Alright.
Alright, we'll draw up the agreement, uh, draft, you guys look at for that other piece of property and.
Did we need to have a motion or vote on that or anything, or just gonna draw it up? What do we have to do there?
We'll draw it up and then the motion will be, once the agreement is drawn up.
Okay. Can I ask one more question? Can we get, um, maybe from Joanna? Uh, if we get a section of the map with a. Pencil drawing even of where they're talking about coming in now? Or where they wanna come in?
Yeah, I'll talk to, um. Mike first, and then we. Mike and Brian may not need to then.
Okay.
Cause I already have an easeway through. It reaches the back of my house. Which I pay taxes on it. So.
Okay.
And it's already open to area, cause I got rid of all the went to kill. So he has a place that he can. Cut through the side of the road, so it wouldn't be on the road, it would just be my property basically to cut through that.
Correct.
Causeway.
If you're willing to, that sounds easier.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a, that's a different one, so there's, um. That's a new business, I know.
Oh, okay.
Um, and that's what, um, Michael Arnold deserves for.
Very much.
But we're at time for the C C P C.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
Howard and Lenore? Good evening, or good afternoon, I miss you.
Hey Cal, is it possible to stop screen sharing now so I can see the room bigger? Please?
Yeah.
Oh, do you need copies? Oh, do you need copies of these?
Thank you kindly.
Lenore has heard.
Lenore has heard.
Yeah.
Yeah, great. Thank you.
It's okay.
Um. So. Uh. We talked a little bit about. The procedural thing that we have to make our way through at the end of this month.
Yes.
In order for the select board to set a default energy. Service rate for Canterbury Community Power. I won't go through that again. I'm assuming you guys are aware of it including that. And I understand she has a a digital copy of the handout, so I appreciate you sending that to her, cause I forgot to send it.
No, I've got it.
No, okay. Um. Basically, what we're, what we're asking the board to do tonight is to consider two possible choices. For. Uh, a default energy service rate for Canterbury Community Power. Going forward in the next six month rate period, which begins August one. And goes until the end of January twenty twenty five, so it's a six month period we're talking about. And we would like the board to consider. Two options for that, one would be leaving the default energy service rate where it is. At granite basic. Although we don't yet know exactly what the granite basic rate is going to be. Until the Coalition Board sets it on at their June twenty seventh. Uh, Board of Directors meeting. We do know. That. It will be the lowest rate available to Canterbury Community Power customers. Right now, that rate is eight point one cents per kilowatt hour. We'd be guessing if we if we tried to. Um, if we tried to speculate about what that granite basic rates might be as of January twenty seventh, when the board acts on the new rate. But I think it's safe to assume if that rate isn't going to move drastically. Either up or down. From the current. Granite basic eight point one cents kilowatt hour. The second option. That we'd like the board to consider, and that frankly. Uh, the Canterbury Community Power Committee is, I think I may say excited to be posing to you tonight. Is what what we're calling a Canterbury basic. Rate. That would include a two mil, two tenths of a cent adder. To whatever the granite basic rate ends up being. When the Coalition Board sets it on June twenty seven. That rate. That option. Would be contingent on the new Canterbury basic meeting. Two conditions and they're set out here in this. Uh, handout. That you have, it runs through pages now, I think. Now, it's still on. No, it is three pages. Yep. Um. The. The the two, the two conditions. That would be attached to the board. Tonight, setting a Canterbury basic default rate for the next six six month period would be number one. It's gotta preserve rate stability, that means. In dollars and cents. If a switch to Canterbury basic rate as of August one. Would result in any. Addition at all, any increase at all in the Canterbury default service rate. It would be measured in mils rather than cents, that is, it could be, it could go up by two, three, four, five, six mils, six tenths of a cent. But it's not gonna go up by two, three, four or six cents. Okay, that's the first, that's the first condition. That we're suggesting. You put on. An adoption of the Canterbury basic rate if you if you choose it. Second condition is equally important. That Canterbury basic rate. Would have to come in with the with the two mil adder on top. Would still have to come in below. The default energy service rates of three jurisdictional utilities that serve Canterbury. Ever Source, Nutile and the New Hampshire Electric Co-op. We can continue to beat all these rates as we have since we started Community Power a year ago. Then, and you choose that rate subject to those conditions. We would by the the board and the CEO. That Canterbury would be opting for a Canterbury basic rate for the six month period. If you don't do that, you don't wanna do that, but you want to leave it. At the lowest possible rate, which is gonna be the granite basic rate. Then you don't need to do anything tonight, because that would happen automatically unless we let. The Canterbury Community Power Coalition know. That the board has decided to adopt a Canterbury basic rate subject to these two conditions and we'll know whether those two conditions happen now. By by Jan, by the twenty seventh. So, uh, I don't wanna. I I wanna invite Lenore to make any um comment she wants, I'm not gonna review. Here.
Yeah.
Because you've got them, uh, and if you have questions about it, we can talk about them. Uh, but what. If that, if you like, I mean.
Yeah, uh, I think it's important to remember that any uh Community Power customer. Always has the option to increase or decrease from whatever the default rate you set. So it's not like you're saying they can be the exact extra amount, just means the bulk of the people who are uh customers would pay the Canterbury basically with the two mils attached.
Mm-hmm.
Still have the option. Uh, I also would add, um, one of the discussions that is being had at the statewide level is that. We asked if we could have this two mil adder on all of the rates. Eventually that may happen, but they're not prepared. Maybe six months or a year from now, it will be an issue and they'll be that much added. So we're headed in that direction anyway.
Say that if you choose to do it. If you choose to use the Canterbury basic rate. It would only be for the six month period, it will expire in the six month period, so we'll be going through a similar analysis like this six months from now. Maybe maybe another thing to point out is that. She said. Calculations, the rough calculation of what that might mean for Canterbury. In in the first year starting August first. Is that a two mil adder? Based on total articulated, not not, based on total load, electric load served by Canterbury Community Power. Which is about ninety-six percent of Canterbury. Uh, that would be fourteen thousand dollars in the first year. Um, you know, in theory. Could ask for a three. Three one thousand dollars. But we we figured it was better to start conservatively. And and see how it works before and 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 see how much room we have. You know, uh, the how much how much there is between our base and utilities, we think it's gonna be, we think it's gonna be enough to do this. This. This rate period, but. Your thoughts for what you are doing for. Yeah, to the select board, but what. This is the one, it'd be clear that this would be used for some. In energy. Energy project. In the future, we don't have one for you to think about. Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, we are exploring that through documents on on CCPC. Um, but it it could be, it could be six months or a year before we come back and say, hey. We have something we'd like you to think about using. And in the meantime. This is the one thing that he thinks about. Is that it begins to deliver on the promise of the Community Power. To put control. Future. In the community's head. To do that is for us to decide how we might. Discretionary reserves. When you go forward. Uh, but it's a little, because it it could be anything, probably a solar farm that serves the whole town. Could result in even. And the official Community Power Coalition rate. Would be a uh. Project. Incentivize. Persons. To install energy efficient. Equipment. Saving devices of some kind or another. Um, but that would be up to the board, CCPC, as you all. Does not have decision making authority here. We can advise them, we're happy to advise them. But it's gonna be your decision.
So what happens to those two bills to the. Act account somewhere?
They're captured, they are accounted for separately. Either be. Pulled up. The CCPC. Instead. A special account that's set up on. Be happy to advise you on that if you wanted to go that way. We hope the funds to be transferred to the Canterbury. Three months or so. Every year. Uh, we we would be able to tell the coalition what we want to do about that, we. It's it's like a capital reserve fund for. Energy projects that have yet to be specified.
I think law is supposed to be putting aside thirty thousand.
Yeah, we heard that the other night.
They're thinking along the same lines, by raising it. Think it's being is like a uh reserve account itself.
So if if you want to, we're happy to, we're happy to continue this discussion as long as anybody. But basically. Those are the time crunches in June, unless you wanna try to meet like at eleven o'clock on June twenty seventh, Thursday. Get involved in an extra meeting, a special meeting. We hope that you people make a decision, so not either to go with. How is possible, which is the basic. Or this this new. Of Canterbury basic contingent on meeting the two conditions that you're talking about. And there's a population here which we could be, we only if you decide you want it. To put it the discretionary reserve adder rate.
Beth, question or comments for you?
Um, yes, my audio is failing again, so I'm gonna change uh locations, which will take me about seven minutes to run to another building. But um as of this moment, personally, I would support uh the Canterbury basic. And um, you know, with the um, you know, the the input of the committee and their excitement over the possibilities of it. I don't think we lose much, and again, if uh anybody in town who cares enough to. To look at what their rates are and wants to opt lower they can, but I think, you know, being able to take advantage of the um. The savings into our into our discretionary fund. While the while the rest of the process is moving forward, if I'm understanding the conversation correctly, to me seems like a good deal.
Vince, I think we should start a little on. We pick up fourteen thousand every six months. Is your point with you?
Yeah, exactly. Alright, uh, do we need a resolution? Yep. So just to read this into. So whereas the board has considered several options for a Canterbury Community Power default energy service rate for the upcoming six month period. From August first, twenty twenty four through January thirty first, twenty twenty five. Now therefore being resolved at the new Community Power default energy service rate for the upcoming six month period beginning August first, twenty twenty four. Being Canterbury basic. Default energy, which would move two mil, two tenths of a cent discretionary fund adder. To the to the lowest cost grid basic rate established by the Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire Board. Upcoming week. Twenty twenty four, contingent on the Canterbury basic energy rate being two. Condition one, it must preserve energy rates. Being that if the default energy rate for CCP customers, which is now eight point one cents per kilowatt. Increase at all because of which the Canterbury basic default rate, any such increase would be measured in mils rather than cents per kilowatt. Condition two, it must continue to be lower than the default energy rate of unitil, ever source, electric co-op. Redistribution facilities for Canterbury. The upcoming six month term. If the new Canterbury basic rate does not meet both conditions, new six month rate for Canterbury Community Power default energy service customers. Will be the new six month grade, the basic rate is established by the CPC NH Board on June twenty seven. I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yep. Thanks, guys.
Okay.
They helped me get from my neighbors, Mr. Mcclair and Carter LeBron, trying to do something with that property over there. I've been here across the street, um, right behind deer, the deer who is directly across him, I put the house down, down the. Right out by his barn.
You live in Elton, Angel?
I do, yeah, and, yeah. Uh, so I'm trying to get under article two point one, obnoxious use. I'm trying to get this under that zone zoning, um. I'm for a few different reasons. Um, first off. One of the. The obnoxious uses prohibited, it's here that obnoxious means the use that is. One of is offensive. That very. when you pull out your driver, you shit this stuff every day.
Stop. What is
you been buying? No, you haven't.
Not not have noticed that.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay, next time you're and actually right now, it actually looks good. Is that is it? Good. I'm gonna give you guys some
Thank you.
Here that I just basically that's the world, it gives you some kind of idea of what of what we're, yeah, it's right on the corner, Carter Hill and Northwest. But this is the stuff that I'm looking at every day, very offensive. Um, and how it determined or how I would like to determine obnoxious use for this particular one is any reasonable person standard causes inconvenience? I can't even tell you the number of times that I've had to go to the top of my driveway and throw stuff back over and be able to sell this property, stuff that's blown over here on these windy days, it's not gonna happen on a ten mile an hour windy day. We've had twenty five, thirty mile an hour winds. And this stuff blows over here, whether it's a kids pool or part of a kid sandbox, whatever it is, and I guarantee uh picked up a lot more than I had, but I've done my fair share as well. I went over and talked to him about this. He kind of laughed. Yeah, I'm a little bit of a worker and I'm probably bring the stuff and clean it up, and then two weeks down the road, you see another new haul, the rider truck in there, it blows off, gets the back open and all the stuff comes out and it just starts all over again. Um, I mean, it's ridiculous. It it also under the obnoxious uses of the paragraph saying examples of evidence that may be relevant, whether the use of obnoxious includes, but is not limited to whether to use negatively impacts surrounding property values. I mean, yes, that doesn't work because myself and Darren, we're that's exactly right across the street. I mean, we get pride in our yards, we keep everything up kept. Uh, and then it's all that crap over there. And, you know, I've been here three and a half years, I have never seen it cleaned up or anywhere it's called to be cleaned up. So this is a continual thing. Now the thing I want to bring up in here too is that this is actually contrary to what he may say, but this is a home business. I've got this, this is card right here, it's barn door intakes by itself. Um, and it says here, if you're going to have a home business under two point five, no offensive noise, traffic, vibrations, smoke, dust, oversheat, glare, unsightfulness is reduced. Uh, obviously, it's unsightfulness. And you go to Enus's off street parking for visitors that he has to provide. Bring any pictures? And it wouldn't be bad enough if you had something that was on the right side of the road, which is it, but this particular this is Carter Hill in the northwest.
Yep.
Um, so this guy places parked on the right side of the road, but his trip is sticking way out. So when traffic turns here, they have to go into downtown traffic, and it's the hill right toward that. So you're coming up over the hill. And I almost had a couple of misses with that, but then you also get people on a part of the opposite side of the street head on coming up. I mean, the whole thing is just absolutely ridiculous. I'm not sure exactly why this happened. Now, I know in the email that I got, you know, you guys have said that you're kind of hesitant to use it under the obnoxious use uh violation. I don't see, I don't see any other reason why it shouldn't be uh something shouldn't be done there. You know, I mean, as you can see there, you've got that whole that big pull along camper. I mean, that thing is terrible. Half of that stuff over there is garbage, it's junk, I've been over there. Uh, you know, I confronted him with, I said, Tim, can we get your stuff cleaned up, man? I'll even give you a hand. I have nothing against the guy. As a matter of fact, I bought a pressure washer, it's only about a month old, I used it a couple of times on my house, well, you must have seen me, guess if you can borrow it? I said, sure. So I get it to him and he said he needed it for about three or four weeks, you know, to get everything done he needed to. So after a month, I went to get it back. And he goes, oh yeah, speaking of that, he says, I don't know, it must have got stolen or but he lost my pressure washer. Yeah, I mean, come on, man, you know, this this guy here, he's willing to instead of getting it, it's not there. Um, so I said, okay, what are you gonna do about my pressure washer? I I think personally that he didn't even know it was mine, I think he sold it. So, you know, yeah, I'm out that money because he's, I don't have any money even for a little, you know, pay for a while. So just done with that whole aspect. Um, but we need to do something with this, get this stuff cleared up. And here's actually this card there, I can leave it that as well. Basically, it shows that, you know, he is a business there. He does, I mean, he's always got people over there all the time, you know, coming through, browsing, looking, and he's been met, you know, he's well, everyone saw you really shady pictures here, so probably one of them stole it. I don't want this across the street, for me, I don't think so. So I mean, what you're
Trying to be polite and all that.
Yep.
It looks hit around the edges. And we've discussed whether it's a business or not, it's a business, and I think you've got a better chance of taking DDA and asking to make there's no way you've got something to lean on. I I don't know.
He even admitted to me that was a business because I had asked him, and that's when he gave me his business card.
I called the question, I've been up there a couple of times. Discussions open and he told him our whole fine business. Was also online to see if he can find a company or anything like that, if he can find anything for that address. So uh at that point, one of those things where you try to trust people at the same time, he tried to go for some officer, did his due diligence, tried to find a company and couldn't at this point, I think like the second said, this would be uh code enforcement, we've drift over code enforcement, and they would have to talk with the gentleman, the property owner, and uh put up some kind of resolution.
Okay, but let's say though that all the home businesses are
Yeah.
Do I think this be faulted under that two point of obnoxious uses just based on reasonable person standard of public inconvenience? If I could go out there, I'm full of that's going over, Darren was actually to be here with me tonight because I know he's already complained about this once before. But it wasn't a, you know, unlike the email, like I said, then it was a phone call, I said, can we do something about this? And, you know, it's hard to find.
Um, so there are two other making the file, there's two two letters.
Um, two.
They're there. Like letters.
Okay. Well, I mean, basically, it's like the select word to investigate the use to determine it. In fact, it falls under the I mean, I mean, it's awesome. And I think that he just needs to be given a decent decision to work or that message. You know, and it, I mean, there's a small portion of it anyhow, which you steal with his house, his barn, I've been in it. It's full, I mean, he can't I mean, the whole thing is like that, it's a fire hazard to begin with. Um, you know, if it goes up, maybe that's for me, but um I don't know what else to do, you know, I've been looking at this thing three and a half years, like I said, hoping well, maybe it's gonna get better at times here, you know? I mean, the stuff sits out there in the winter year round, it doesn't matter. Um, and in the spring, it just adds more to it, it adds to it throughout the summertime. You know, by the fall, it gets just as bad again. So basically, nicely between the the way the cars are parked when they go in there, that's a habit to begin with. I mean, they stop before somebody gets an accident, park with the trailer parked on the wrong side of the road on top of the hill. Um, it's definitely uh obnoxious use in regards that it 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 uh impacts my property values as well as Darren's. So I mean, just, you know, with with evil home business, it's not something those two things right there. I don't see why we couldn't do something with this. You know, I talked to him, he kind of laughed about it like a joke, you know, I mean, I'm a nice guy, I'll, you know, I told him, I said, hey, man, you know, if you want to hand some of the stuff, I can bring it, you know, bring stuff up to the dump. I don't know, all this stuff is good stuff, it's, you know, it's
So um, again, my audio is a little lousy, but um am I correct in understanding that uh he says he's running a business there, but uh there's no record of a business being filed as being running there? Is that part of the conversation I heard correctly?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. Um, does that matter if he hasn't filed for a business, if he is conducting business there?
Oh, very least, that's a zoning uh fraction there. I suppose that was special exception for a home business. Which goes to ZBA.
I know, he told me that that's his all source bin comp, that's how he makes a living, it's selling and buying the antiques that he has for sale out there.
I think it was the BBA, I'm sure. I know, we're kind of
So again, either way, it seems like either obnoxious use or uh inappropriate business practices, if that's the correct, correct way to say it, because um, you know, if you even think back to uh you know, the um, the bread bakery down on Wilson Road that had to comply, you know, Joel went out and he, she had to comply with all six things to get her special exception for that business. You know, she complied with everything. If this is a business, there's a lot of those boxes it doesn't check off. It seems reasonable to at least Joel be involved. Um, as he went out to pack out a bread bakery. Again, I'm I'm listening to a fractured bit of this conversation, but it it seems um if it's going to attempt to be a business, it needs to follow the business rules and it's not.
I don't think I have a problem with the business, you know, when his driveway goes in, it goes right dead end right into the barn, the barn doors. You know what? Some room, move all that stuff in the barn doors, you can have people pull up in your driveway, they can win the barn all day long, I mean, that'd be awesome, that'd be great. It gets rid of all that garbage out there, it gets rid of the stuff flying across the street and it gets rid of the traffic hazard.
Yeah, the uh zoning ordinance two point five, which is home office occupation, home shop, home industry, it's pretty specific of what what
Yeah, it had very specific requirements for parking and traffic and noise and disturbing and smells and they're very specific for the, for a business. And again, if this is a business, I would think it would need to comply with that and it's and it's and it's not.
So I guess, I mean, if you go up, it's a business, obviously, he's probably gonna tell you no. So then then what happens? I mean, do we just
I think we have proof now that it is a business.
Yeah.
Um, again, it's
I mean, that's why Daniel started, when I first met the guy, he goes, well, here, here's my business partner for the stuff that I make my living on, I buy it up to me, you know, it's business. Whether I register or that's another thing.
It's gotta be something like storage. There is, there are no uh no exterior storage fresh material equipment.
Like I said, what basically impacts me directly across my driveway is not in the side of this barn, it's extension from the barn, it's unclued, like he's got all that filled in with pallets and doors and his toys and stuff like that, and that's the stuff that blows over onto my my yard. I mean, it's just, you know, the the stuff is just all over the house, I mean, it's every place, you know, say, just you know, just get this layer of your hair cleaned up because you got the whole rest of it around the place. So, you know, like I said, he can just put it inside the barn. I mean, to me, that'd be the best solution for him, but he wants to continue doing that, just put everything in the barn and stuff there.
Joel, they uh will be a code enforcement officer and then see how that plays out. Yeah. Yeah.
That's great, I appreciate it. And and anything we can get done is better than what it is now.
Yeah. So
Awesome, thanks so much for the time, appreciate it. And you can keep all that stuff.
We appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
If you
Excuse me, Ken, do we have um letters other than um his and the one from Jeremy Slaton? Are there more on that property?
There's one from Mr. Darren.
Okay.
Wow.
This is filed there.
Did you do it again? Um, not really, but I'm not sure, it's one moment.
I think that's and what you spoke probably the the uh under new business. Purchasing the other town. Yeah. Looking at it. Oh, okay.
I'll
Yeah, I'll watch it.
Under new business, there's a
Oh, yeah.
Yes. Um, and the packet is I said that I Daniel. They made several offer letters over the years and then their uh neighbors um might
I don't know. Probably not. Okay.
No, uh, maybe?
Oh, uh
One more second, I think I'm, I think I'm back. Are you looking to me, Cal?
Yeah, I'm I'm I can't remember, I managed to send you um offers, offers. And I just sent the most recent
Yes, I've seen the offer letters.
I didn't find earlier.
Oh, okay, hold on. Let me see what I have.
Do you have offers on the left outside of two?
No.
Just David and myself?
That's correct.
Oh, okay. We've already decided, we've already had, we've already just right. Okay, all right. What does he have to protect and preserve?
You found?
No, I've got the offer, are we uh discussing? I may have to move my venue because this is not this is not helping.
I'm gonna forward I'm gonna forward to the email from Mike.
Thank you.
And does she have Denise and David?
I believe I sent that one.
Uh, yes, the the, I do not know how to say their last name, Diagnose? I've got that offer, wait, something else just came in, potential offer on forty one Gilmanton. Hold on.
Mine from twenty one. That email.
All right. I just got potential offer on forty one Old Gilmanton.
Yeah.
Okay. Down Holden Duke for three years. I, I think I'm back, thank you.
Okay.
Jesse, but one, one second, um. All right, um. All right, I was torn the channel for about thirty years, can't watch it. All right, so Cal, the letter that you just sent me, what I'm reading is the response from Mandy to Michael? Is that what you wanted me to read?
Uh, you have one thing and, and when I put it out for the other select board members is a different thing, but they're both saying the same thing. One is the email trail that went between Mike, Mike Arnold and Mandy back in twenty-one. And then what you do have in paper is the formal letter, they both say the same thing and refer to the same offer.
Okay.
But one is that I happen to have digitally, that I can email to you right now and send it in paper.
Um, I believe if you can hear me and if there is a, uh, obviously a quorum of other select board members in the room who can discuss this while they can hear, I'm going to go offline for about seven minutes and go to another building. I don't think I need to weigh in on this discussion per se. Um, again, if Scott and Kent can figure this out, but I'll check in when I get to the other building. That way I'll have more reliable sound and I won't have to keep doing this. So I'm going to bow out of the meeting, is that proper for me to do for about seven to ten minutes? And let you continue and then come back in, what do I have to do to make that okay?
Just do it.
Okay, I'm doing it, I'll see you in a couple of minutes.
Um, my, a question for you.
Yes.
So are, are you actually making two offers tonight?
No, so let me explain what happened.
Yeah.
I originally made an offer on forty-one Old Gilminton, which is probably what we were just discussing with Cal. In doing my due diligence, my research, I noted that was the property directly impacted me. And that's what I made an offer in on twenty-one at that time. As I understood it, I could do nothing for the three years and here we are moving three years ahead, so we're at that.
Okay.
That point, but I wanted to note that Mandy and Ken, I'm gonna put it in the file, that property. I am here because that property on Nottingham directly abuts the back of my house, we're talking like ten feet. Um, the property line stops. Okay, and what we're concerned on is, I don't know where it is, a new developer in the association might want it to do something, even though it's not categorized as a buildable lot, it might, then he can store it. So my offer originally was to protect the back of my house. Okay, and potentially just clean up the debt, what I did at one Old Gilminton. Okay, but what I do is I make the, I take it off of taxes, turn it into a taxes and then we could, or attach it to my deed itself. And that was the same thing we did with one, because there was another, um, hosting bill down there and I wanted to protect the property because I didn't. I just, I, I, I'm like, that's a chicken one, it's a market.
Are you, are you going to do a lot line change and meld it and merge it with your lot or are you thinking you're going to keep it separate?
No, I think I, based on the last, it had to be part of my deed, so what happened is it automatically moved over to my deed and then I paid taxes on it.
So typically, but, uh, condition in the deed with all these last butters, they have to be merged. Official residential laws, uh, you can put a garage, ship or something like that on it, no additional residential law. They have them merged.
I have to go through seven, right?
No, 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 just merge. It gets done to, uh, man. So you give this as two separate things? Okay, you have two offers. Residents, right. Okay, so we've got an offer from David and Denise.
Yeah.
About, uh, three thousand five.
Yeah.
Might be offered for you is two thousand dollars, right?
No, three thousand, back in twenty-one.
Okay, so you.
So I paid two thousand for the lot on forty-one and in the same letter back twenty-one, I offered you because of, that'd be three years from like a lot.
Suggested that you wait.
Yeah.
Do pretty much, and it's just.
Yeah. Yeah, and we've already had time.
Yeah.
It stays nice.
Yes.
Yeah, we expect the David and Denise offer five hundred dollars more, so.
Now, um, can I make a connection with the letter contingent on a title search?
Does the concern after you've had to talk to them.
Here are one of these guys.
There's no like.
I did it on forty-one Old Gilminton, place I can't use them because I dealt with the town, I bought that one, but, yeah.
Definitely.
Yeah. Cause I offered that, twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah. Twenty thousand, so no.
Uh, question for sure before, do you weigh back all the back?
Yeah, we're not.
If you keep it separate, technically we'll.
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Pretty goes on to your deal, thank you.
Right, yeah, we, when we bought the other lot, they just merged it.
Yeah.
Is that kind of paths for them to, because I'm just afraid, um, like, it's a lot.
It's a lot.
Yeah, so if someone wants to come in in the next, all right, good, you guys agree to them, we're hoping?
What's your question?
Island is planned for the town.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yes, yeah.
So we would have to wrap us up, purchase and sales and do all that, it would be, it wa, it won't, the, the closing will not be until after July.
Yeah, but I mean, like, if someone came in before that time, like, and missed out.
And taxes. Someone came in to pay the taxes, then I could potentially put a month's pension.
Someone that owned the lot?
Somebody, a previous owner. Not somebody, no, I, I just remember, no, it'd be a previous owner. We're bound to want to notify that previous owner. So do we need to motion that? Do we accept, accept the offer and pay? Yeah, I understand. And then, and we have to follow the legal procedures for selling a town.
Yeah, and then, and then you'll still keep my offer online if something falls through with that, is this true? Okay, you get.
And that's all. So you just stated that if a previous owner was to show up and say, I want to pay the taxes, does the town? Does the town currently own it?
Yes.
So if, if that previous owner was to come by, would you tell them that they can have, you know, it's a decision, they can't put residence in the building owners? And you're setting the deed back over to them like that?
I don't, I don't know, I don't think so, but I, that would be the question for our third.
Yeah, our previous owner.
Three or two. Yeah, but, yeah, taxes wasn't just my taxes, so I'm not sure, but I, and we have to get, to see what it was. My box protected, even after the town took it, for the last three years, those, those taxes, the penalties are still growing. If they pay it back, what's the tax that owed before that?
I just wasn't sure because if you're a homeowner, you can help the, I don't think you do it in return.
I don't know. Yeah, this is a question, yeah. Sorry.
Can we, can we get an actual motion?
Yeah, we can, so David helped me, I'm going to make a motion to accept the offer, David and Denise, no. For, um, eighteen, eighteen hundred and fifty. One.
Twenty.
Forty-one, yeah, in the amount of three thousand five hundred. Okay, so. Close the case.
Dave, let me get the first.
I am here, but I'm having a very difficult time understanding everybody. Okay.
So, the Army Lane on here, um.
Beth Blair is back online and I also am having trouble with the audio.
We, I spoke to you about, uh, the public replacement on Army Lane, so, um, that, as, uh, the school there has been working on, allegedly for quite a while, uh, it might be. So, I'm supporting, uh, last week, uh, they have, uh, they have, they're very successful with easy funds, uh, about nearly fifty-six thousand four hundred thirty dollars. Uh, they also have other committed funds, forty-two thousand dollars for residents, the rest, the bucks, ninety thousand dollars for, we've got two of our divisions.
Now we have no volume. It's, it's not, I don't, the other, um.
Regular company companies and, uh, both of them fall around ninety thousand, they fall around ninety thousand a month or less. Uh, we talked about different ways of, uh, protecting funding, uh, the, like, definitely the town, uh, the only way that they loan or funding that can be paid back via the tax department, the capital to a Gilman district, it's not allowed to, uh, uh, split the dividend, or LHC or anything like that. Uh, so, if he, if he, even if they loan the town, it must be, they have to come through a, through a system, that means that they have to overgo it. Uh, there are options, uh, by the time, as of past, uh, the, the, the Gilman needed some money, they found a way that they needed to give to the fund. Uh, whatever, whatever would happen, whatever could possibly happen, we got the cabinet, that's next one, something that happened, the town was not able to wait. Well, so we'll put off twenty-three thousand, uh, over or, or even, uh.
They could be, uh, uh, either sponsored by the, uh, select or, or fiction warrant article, which provides twenty-five signatures of registered voters.
Thank you, Cal.
And that would go, so those are the two potential ways a, a warrant could be posted for the next time they, uh, and, and after that, it's, yeah, the residents of the town determine what they, um, and if, and I would say interim, that it, it would probably be a good idea for the LLC to, to, uh, investigate how other towns may have done this, uh, if, you know, uh, that would probably get selectmen's, uh, and town's support on this.
The selectmen and the town, they do a benefit line, but people that do not pay, you know, we have need to eighteen home, and we have a priority that, okay, you know, that ninety thousand, which already dropped down to a thousand because I volunteered my time. You know, instead of the state hiring an engineer, so we save a ten thousand, yeah, but there's a few people that do it for, you know, they refuse. But that's where we're at now, and I, I don't know if Kim has told you, it's in dire needs.
Yes.
You know, we have four public projects, one's completely collapsed, the other one is just, and Bob, Kim's husband, he's been out there taking all the beaver stock, you know, and we'll work about getting trucks and.
Right, right, sure. Uh, and, and again, you know, we think, nothing could happen till March.
Other, we're gonna have a meeting on this on the, um, twenty-third, uh, to. And other option is to build something on top of what we got here now to get us through. Uh, construction companies we talked to, they said they weren't keen on that, but, you know, we could do something like that, but we still have the plumbing issue because all this flooding we've been having, everything's been happening, it's just about washed out the road and on the rotation of, I do the plow and I, I get the truck, I did the two, and they even passed the road, so I'm, I'm doing all the upkeep on the road. Yeah.
Big job.
Yeah, it is, I, I've been doing it, I've been there, I've been around for forty years now and I've been doing the most of plowing now, we're doing, doing maintenance on it, so. So that's where we're, we're at. Yeah. Yeah, we would like to get it done as soon as, or, and it's been waiting long, if I should go up again, you know?
So, so are you gonna be making traffic going the other direction now too?
Yes, uh, um, Michelle and owns the property, it's supposed to be a, but previous owners will not block it all off, but we have her permission now. We made, we, the police came in, um, five, came over and inspected, I cut down a couple of trees and there was a few holes in there, I think it's all, I mean, he came over, this is great, so we have on the side of Army Lane, Army Lane, uh, north, on his south, exactly, on his south, yeah. So we made that provision, so that's another thing that was, wanted to be business, if we have to build a bridge, you know, that acts, and that's a place to put a bridge there, so, and she'll, uh, ask you, so, for, she wants for the residents, but we can't get big trucks in and out in the, yeah, contract, know that. Yeah, they get their equipment in there, not, they got it all.
It's, it's a sad situation when you come on six out there.
That's the other thing, i- if you know the road, you know, us winter people, spend the winter there, not, everybody does, so. You get out there and it's dangerous to get out, and one of our things is with the contract, the two contracts we talked, they had to take a couple of trees down. Uh, and we're gonna move the driveway, the guy, Ken, be there on Loudon's side, he, you're smitting the. We can go up and. And we'll give them see the trap, that's one of the options, you know. You know, they're gonna do what they can, now they should off, then we have to pave it so many feet back in the highway when when it's all set and done. So that's, you're gonna be a lot of fill in there, aren't you, or. Ah, just back here, that's, these, we can cut down that, stay on the other side of it, and they already stayed it out. Do not. From the driveway now, the way now, there's fifty feet off, so there's probably room to work with.
Yeah.
What's that? I'm gonna keep the cost up this weekend.
Yeah, I went out there last winter. It felt like I was in one of those.
Our one, that's, yeah, she uh, bring a new car, she paid him on it, and she went up and did a three. Well. And it's a rarity, we get a battle sand there, and of course, we got another, I got a battle sand on each side.
I've been there, but I just don't know how to drive.
Yeah. Like I said, I've been there forty years and we've been, this is just an emergency, nobody wants to. You know, a new culvert in.
Yep.
So.
Yeah.
And in order to get the grant, we can't, we can't put it, the steel. They bought a box. Which is gonna be a lot nicer, and the people, people. But that's. That, that's why we're reaching out.
Yeah, so it sounds like E is more.
I'm thinking, yeah, because Kim, she even said last week, she said, hey, we, we, uh, she, she, she's dealing with a woman in the state. Tracy was her name. She uh, Tracy said she did some research and we can do it, we can oversee it. So.
Yeah.
Yeah, we thought. That, you know. Yeah. Yeah, and she talked to contractors, both contractors at bidding. And they said they're gonna try and work with us on it. You know, the basic price is just about a couple of grand, it's all the state engineering and the, you know, all the uh, stuff they gotta do, you know.
Yeah.
And bringing up the price.
Yeah.
So basically, there's nothing we can, we can, there's no searches for a town vote.
Yeah. Yeah. Uh, and that wouldn't be. Right. Let's just.
We pay so much tax out there with all of us, and we get no services, and we don't have any kids in school out there, nothing. We get nothing with it. Just look at the roads down there like that, just tell road, they're paying taxes, I know, but look at the town, you know. But, you know, it just seems like we don't get anything. You know, other than basics, but but as far as roads goes. In this situation where we're like really stuck with a lot of people that can't afford to. Pay, is my, and we've already paid in, we've got a lot of upkeep on the road, and we've already made donations towards the legal services.
Yeah, that's that's uh, that's that's the best we can.
And we'll see how this meeting goes and, you know. See how short it's gonna be. You know, it's it's gonna be so far, it's putting in like twenty three hundred dollars, you know, for the engineering and stuff. Now they're talking, if we're talking around eighty thousand dollars, another forty eight hundred dollars a household, you know, and. A lot of money.
Yes.
That's what we have to issue.
Yes.
Who's gonna pay, who's not?
Yeah.
No. All right, well, all right, thank you for your time.
And thank you, Alison. You need that?
All right.
Congratulations. Pictures or?
Yeah.
Beth, are you back with us? Can you hear us?
I am back, the audio is not any better, but it's not this end, I'm currently on high speed fiber optic connection. And um, the other person who's on Zoom as well, the audio is equally choppy. So I'm I'm following as best I can, but I'm catching like every other word.
Okay. All right, so uh, third, has payable. Forty nine thousand two hundred and ten dollars to twelve cents. All second, fellows in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that I heard.
All right, good. Oh, sixty seven thousand one hundred and two cents.
So moved.
Second, opposed in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Jeff.
You're welcome.
This is the amount of one thousand five hundred forty five dollars and twenty five. Second.
I, I think that was the proper time.
The amount of two thousand one hundred dollars. So second, opposed in favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Brindis Foley, want to talk about the.
So that was uh. Result of um, some over expenditures from legal fees by different town departments. Uh, we didn't have any policy on hand that spelled out how to contact legal counsel by the boards and committees. Uh, so that. It was happened, yeah, uh. And then, and.
Is this um, is this discussing the amount online, we're on profit and loss now, correct?
No, we're uh, we're on the uh. The uh. Action Council.
Oh, oh, got it. Got it, I was looking at the profit and loss, which I had a question about it, the same topic, so um, okay.
Um, Bethany, do you have a question, do you want to answer that?
No, I'm missing, I'm missing this part, uh, the the um, is the policy, the new policy, or the policy that you're looking at at this moment different? Than the one you emailed us a few weeks back, Ken?
Uh, yes. Yes.
I emailed a new one, um, it's one of the. I emailed you a new one in one of the. Uh, emails about this meeting.
Okay.
The.
The one that had eleven attachments to it?
Probably.
Okay.
Had the edit that you um, you all requested at the last meeting. You wanted it changed from having uh. It said that anybody could access town council to department heads and board chairs could access town council.
Oh, okay, if that change is in there, then I'm, then that's fine.
So I'll second Kent Malkin. All opposed in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Kent, this tip affected you? And we'll.
So, yeah, the copy of all the permits.
There you go. All right, next item is the uh, Duncan River Riverland Beach Access Regulations.
So the constipation commission had a few changes, uh, the probably the the biggest one was the date change. Uh, it was typically opening on the work day, and they'd like to open it earlier than now, um, and then close a little bit later. Um, police department has no issue with it, so they didn't. The rest was housekeeping.
And the only change that you requested in the last meeting. Uh. Was actually just a mistake, cause um, you had, you guys had a different committee than Kelly did. So um, you had requested that only the police department could enforce.
Yep.
And that is what. I copied.
Yep.
So. There's pre copied, present regulations, the proposed ones from Kelly, and one that's clean and ready to sign, which is the same. Yes, the one with the blue. I want the first signature.
Do we need a motion? So I'll make a motion, we accept the. Let me identify this count.
Riverland Beach Policy.
Okay, so just a recent version, yes, okay, so I'll make a motion that we accept the town chamber Riverland Beach Access Regulations.
Second.
Favor.
Aye.
Aye.
No, I mean, that's the problem with an agenda that gets updated.
Okay, so we'll get the uh, religious exemption for four seventy six acre road. Getting this late or?
That, yes, so all of these, the exemptions should have been filed by April first.
Yep.
Uh, they were not, we followed up, they ended up getting a tax bill, and subsequently, both of these organizations have filed. The application for tax exemption.
Looks like with a letter of explanation.
Yes. All properties did have exemptions, but it came time to file the paperwork, we did not file, they were sent notices, we still did not file. They were sent bills, once they got the tax bill, that's when they filed.
So.
Thanks, Dan.
I'll let you read Mandy's recommendation. The exemption.
Um, you might wanna read it out loud.
Okay. All right.
Maybe.
Yeah. So I'll just, I'll, I'll. Recommendation, which is, as the A nine forms not received by April fifteenth, Beulah Fellowship would issue the tax bill fourteen twenty four. On June sixth, they filed the A nine, which I received on June tenth. Recommend that we do not accept the late filing of your accident, mistake, or misfortune. Nathan Davis, president of Beulah Fellowship, is well aware of the requirements for the tax exemption, as you may remember, we just went through the same process within a year. And the selectmen agreed to waive the taxes and accept the form late under accident, mistake, misfortune. Due to the changes at Beulah with new president and staff. Nathan Davis has been listed on the submitted BTLA A nine forms since at least twenty seventeen. The paperwork received is not filled out in its entirety and does not disclose what portions of the property are applying for the exemption or its primary use information. The past few years, I have been monitoring this property and have seen no evidence that the property has actually been used or occupied. I reached out to our fire chief to ask if an assembly document has ever been obtained, he shows no record of it. Immediately, Mr. Davis has stated that they have not used the property out of an abundance of property. Out of February, his understanding of the reasoning. You had his relevant argument today, due to the abandoned member of the property. It's deteriorating, should the property remain on the technical. For Davis to obtain equity to ensure accurate assessment of the property. If the selectman agrees with my recommendation, I will respond to the Beulah Fellowship, letting them know that the town's decision. Filing of the A nine.
So Cal, I didn't receive uh, anything on this this issue that we're currently discussing? Okay. And this is Beulah Fellowship, from what I could understand? Okay. I might just have you turn, I should just dial in on my phone and listen, I think it would be more clear.
Honestly, it might.
Um. How can we do that? Cause this is frustrating, I really am catching every other word, and I don't, I'm either, I'm not sure I'm being helpful, but there's parts of the discussion I still want to. Um, hear like the update on, I would like to participate in this and. Um, you know, get the update on Pinnacle Rescue, but this is just, it's so fractured, I I can barely. Get the gist of what you're talking about now, I don't know how you hear me, but the audio coming back is. Almost useless.
Um, we can hear you clearly, just call, just call me. Put your Zoom unmute, and then just call me, I'll put you on speaker.
Thank you.
And this is why, when I posted on YouTube, I say go look at Edgar's video.
Expect that those deals will work.
Yep. You're getting a double echo, do you? Um, I hear that.
Oh, it's a lot better.
Right, yeah. She needs to be.
All fails. Uh, no?
Seeing like there ain't nowhere working. And it's still there, Beth?
Do you?
Beth?
Was here?
I mean, I have Wi-Fi calling on.
And?
Beth, can you hear? We can hear you. I.
You're here.
Right.
She's, she's on the Wi-Fi call.
Hmm.
Good feeling, man.
Hello?
Hi, Beth, can you hear us?
I can hear you now perfectly. I can mute the computer as well as, uh, well, as the, uh.
Okay, awesome. Um. Alright. Can you test to see if she can hear you over there?
Hello?
Yes, I can hear you just fine.
And me?
I can hear you, Ken, but I can't hear Scott. I've heard almost nothing of what you read about the Beulah Fellowship. And if you want me to pay attention, I might have to ask you to read again, whether to be a pain.
No, uh, let me just read it again. So, so this is from Mandy. And it is regarding the, uh, religious exemption at four seventy-six Shakira Road, which is the Beulah Fellowship. And she says, since the A nine form was not received by April fifteenth, Beulah Fellowship was issued the tax bill for twenty twenty-four. On June sixth, they filed the A nine form, which I received on June tenth. I recommend that we do not accept the late filing under accident, mistake, or misfortune this year. Nathan Davis, president of Beulah Fellowship, is well aware of the requirements for the tax exemption. As you may remember, we just went through the same process with them last year. The select board agreed to abate the taxes and accept the form under accident, mistake, misfortune due to changes at Beulah with a new president and staff. My records show Nathan Davis has been listed on the submitted BTLA A nine forms since at least twenty seventeen. Furthermore, the paperwork received is not filled out in its entirety and does not disclose what portions of the property are applying for the exemption or its primary use and duration. The past few years, I have been monitoring this property and have seen no evidence that the property has actually been used or occupied. I reached out to the fire chief to ask if an assembly permit has ever been obtained, and he shows no record of one. Admittedly, Mr. Davis has stated they have not used the property out of an abundance of caution during COVID. Tom Canterbury was understanding of the reasoning in the past. But I don't feel that is, that it is a relevant argument today. Due to the abandonment of the property, it is evident that the buildings have become deteriorated. Should the property remain on the tax rule? I worked with Mr. Davis to obtain entry to ensure an accurate assessment of the property going forward. If the select board agrees with my recommendation, I will write a formal response letter to Beulah Fellowship, letting them know of the town's decision to not accept the late filing of the A nine four. End of letter for Mandy.
Alrighty, thank you. I've heard that very word perfectly. It makes good sense to me.
Yup. Ken, you finish up.
Um. This is a second, you've done this, and I think we should send the message that this isn't acceptable. I, I think they can get their paperwork in like the rest of us do. On time.
Beth?
It seems like, um, if, if, if he's well aware of the situation, he went through it last year, which is definitely brought up my home. And, uh, again, if the property isn't being viewed, um, it's, it seems like Mandy has something to do with it. And figuring out the situation, I, I would agree. I would agree with Mandy's assessment.
I agree as well. So.
Take a motion?
Yeah. So I will make a motion that we do not accept the BTLA A nine form.
Second.
Close in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You need this?
Hey.
Alrighty, thank you for persevering with me, because I can now hear you all perfectly. This is a lot less frustrating.
Yup. So I'll put this back in Beulah.
There's signatures required. Um, little blue, um, patterns.
Yeah, okay, so I'm gonna circle deny.
Yes.
Thank you, Cal, for. To the soundtrack. Okay, so the next one is. Okay, we'll keep it close. For D B A Church of the Woods. Um, and, uh, I will read you Mandy's recommendation on this one as well. Uh, she says, since the A nine form was not received by April fifteenth, Carol's Earth was issued a tax bill for twenty twenty-four. On June thirteenth, they received the, they filed the A nine form. I recommend denying the exemption for twenty twenty-four for unsatisfactory late filing. If the select board agrees with my recommendations, I will write a formal response letter to Carol's Earth, letting them know of the town's decision to not accept the late filing of the A nine four.
Why was it unsatisfactory? Just because of the lateness?
I believe it was late last year as well, is my memory. But yes, uh, Beth, as I read this, unsatisfactory because of the late filing.
How long, uh, I'm not sure if we accept a late filing from Beulah?
Just last year.
Just? So we accepted late filing from, uh, Carol's Earth last year, but Mandy recommended not this year because of similar lateness?
Correct.
What do you say? That one's hard, because I know it's an active church. It's not like Beulah's has been abandoned. They're trying to hedge it, um, lateness. Yeah, but, you know, this one to me is, is not as clear cut. So, um, I'm willing to listen to it.
I'm gonna stick with my original assessment. This should have been paid on time. We knew it was coming. We went through the process of preparing a deep, I mean, a, a tax, uh, document for it and I, I, I see why we should.
I agree with. I am.
Curious what the, uh, what the end result is. So if you, you, you get a tax bill for, uh, twenty-four, but couldn't apply for the religious exemption, uh, next year?
That's correct.
So, okay, well.
Yeah, I agree with Kent. This is. Take this. I think the number. I believe last year he promised we're not doing it again. So here we are. So I'll make a motion that we not accept the, uh, BTLA A nine.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Tessa.
Did we resolve, Cal, that you had, I had a question about the minutes with, um, if what we said?
Yeah, I don't think so.
My question was, I just wanted clarification on, but, uh, Trey Manzelli had said online, eighty-nine H, uh, not representing South half, only representing number of the household. On, I'm, I'm part of Biden wrote out, just wanted to double check that that was correct.
Yes, it's it.
Okay. Okay. Um. One question that further at our work session, this is a note, and I don't know what that note. Um, that has nothing to do with the minutes, other than that minutes were fine.
Looking for motion?
Don't move.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Okay. Backed out with new business?
Yeah.
Kind of aggressively?
Yeah.
Let's talk about.
Um. So I attended a, uh, meeting of, uh, the town served by Pinnacle Rescue, uh, all the towns, uh, represented there, uh, by select boards and fire chiefs, with the exception of Ken, who, who, who was not attended. Um, the purpose of the meeting really was, I think, to hold the towns regarding the future of ambulance delivery service to each of the towns. And according to Pinnacle Rescue, the call volume continues to increase. And they, about thirty-three times this year, calls go out simultaneously that require them to use mutual aid for another ambulance. So. So, um, the we don't have firm numbers yet, but, uh, the numbers, um, in, in very rough numbers and the proposals that they're considering are potentially putting, it's called a fly car with a paramedic in it, which would do first response to medical emergencies, but would not be able to transport. So they would start.
So, so, hey Scott, did you think that, oh, they fly car like?
That's correct. Like, like, fly there quickly.
Okay.
So I don't have any costs for that, um, but that would be a single paramedic and single vehicle. So Pinnacle Rescue has capital reserve accounts to pay for vehicles. So we would just be on, on the hook, if you will, for our portion of the increase for that paramedic salary for, for the year. Action two would be a second ambulance. That would, would be put on the road for about twelve hours per day. Probably during the daytime hours, which is when, um, all three communities are having trouble getting crews to. Oskoona does not do first response EMS to fire department. So they're literally waiting for the ambulance from Pinnacle to get there, to begin. The fire department in certain cases does go, but that is not one of their primary mission. Um, so if they put an ambulance on the road for additional twelve hours, first of all, they would have to order another ambulance. That, like, fire engines these days, they about three years out. So they do have a spare that they use in the meantime, but for us in Canterbury, that would probably mean somewhere in the neighborhood eighty-seven thousand dollars per year extra. So we would go hundred, sixty to, up to two hundred and forty, shouldn't it be?
Yeah, so.
So, but keep in mind, that's only an ambulance for additional twelve hours. Uh, if they went with a second ambulance twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, that would essentially. That's if they hired qualified people to staff it. And as we all know, that's what the difficulty any municipalities face currently. So this meeting was really just to make us aware of kind of the current state of ambulance service to the towns and look at where we think we want to be moving forward. So that was really simple in a nutshell. It was about an hour.
And I'm assuming that that amount that Canterbury's costs would go up is proportional dividend between the towns that use Pinnacle Rescue, according to, is a size of ten or more than by call volume?
So it's by, uh, population. So that's called that. Call volume is almost impossible to predict. Um, for instance, Canterbury is well ahead of last year, and we don't really know why. Um, so that could happen to any one of the three towns. And I think, in, in my opinion, the fairest way is to do it by population.
Is it possibly where, um, nursing home is?
Yeah.
Yes, that's correct. So.
Does that, does that make the figure at all?
It, it, yeah. I, but I don't know how you would splinter off, you know, like, like a nursing home and, and get Oskoona to pay extra for it.
Unless you see what the call volume is to the nursing home, it'd be an interesting number to pass.
Yeah, those, I mean, those are all public records, so.
The other issue was, it's a, it's a, uh, county nursing home, so they don't pay taxes. Uh, it's not a private nursing home that. It can be from all over the county though.
Correct, yeah.
But, but they don't, the town of Oskoona pays taxes.
Yeah.
In the bullets.
Yeah. So the, there is a second meeting scheduled with the three towns. Uh, and, and what they'll be looking for for us at that meeting is what we think them providing second ambulance twenty-four seven, uh, spending eight to twelve hours a day, a fly car with a medic, or something in between. Um. You know, I really get the feeling that, um, nothing is carved in stone, but their call volume has increased to the point where they want to have a discussion.
Boy, it sounds like a second ambulance is what's needed, but a fly car is what people might be willing to afford.
Agreed, that, yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, I, you know, I remember when that number from the ambulance took a significant rise, not all that many years ago, and, and now potentially we're looking at the, that number again significantly rising. And, you know, part of the we're really paying a big rate with no guarantees, um. And, and, you know, they're it's the state where things are, I guess is maybe the right way to say it. Um, you know, they're having trouble hiring the staffing, as are we, as are all municipalities in this state.
So do we know, um, if our, um, population, our residents have suffered by their abusing, you know, those extra calls for mutual aid, has Canterbury gone unserved in any way that we can tell with this current situation? Are, are, has the service to our population, you know, not been?
I think that's a difficult question to answer. You know, we, we certainly, we're fortunate because we get mutual aid and, and in some cases, primary ambulance response for both Almond and Belma. Um, but, um, you know, it's very, very difficult to classify a delay. Um, I'm not sure that anyone is tracking that, Ben. You know, there. Um, I'm not sure that anyone is tracking that, that, um, you know, there. Mutual aid, um, is, is common in fire EMS and police. It's, it's just the way things have always been done. I don't, I don't think it's a better way. You know, certainly to put an ambulance here in Canterbury, staff it. I think we'd be approaching a million dollars a year, um, by the time you pay full-time salaries, ambulance is about three hundred seventy-five dollars, three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. And, uh, we'd be paying for payroll benefits, pensions, et cetera. Uh, so, you know, when you look at it in that light, um, we're, we're doing pretty good in Pinnacle Rescue. And I, I think that they're being a responsible provider by sort of weighing a five, not saying, you've got to look at this with us and come to some decision with us.
It seems, it seems that are, yeah.
I, I agree. I mean, I, I certainly have, um, I've had a number of interactions with their leadership and I, I know that they, um, they are a nonprofit, first of all, and, and the, um, then the leadership that I spoke with and that I know are concerned about delivering quality care to all three towns. So I guess, you know, having delivered that report, what I'm going to suggest is that we give this into some thought. Um, Pinnacle was supposed to have some harder numbers for us for the next meeting. Um, but as, you know, as we move forward, it's a budget season, um, you know, this is potentially a big issue.
Oh, absolutely. Is there any? Is there any other way, this may be an unanswerable question, for Canterbury to support, um, Pinnacle Fire Rescue, uh, without, that's not a dollar amount. I don't even know, I don't even know if that's a reasonable question. Is there a way that we can support staff-wise or, no, that doesn't make sense? They sound like they're split out and up against it now. Even, even, you know, looking at what's coming down the road. So, you know, how can we help them? Is there a way we can help them now with our current staff and, uh, EMT professionals, um, or anybody's in the, you know, the fire department? Is there a way to help or is that just get too complicated?
No. So from time to time, we do supply personnel to go out in the ambulance. Um, you know, think of a bad auto wreck on a ninety-three. You know, very often I have to use the ambulance with, uh, with a bad patient with downs. That's the way that we've supplemented them in the past. Uh, and do I think that we should regularly be supplying them with personnel? No. Um, I just, I would hate to take, because as you know, we only have one person on duty during the day, a part-timer. And to take that one person out of town to, to staff the ambulance, I don't think it's fair to Canterbury residents.
Any of our, um, you know, any skill set of the, of the, uh, fire department EMT volunteers would be valuable. But if, if that's not, now again, I don't know those, I don't know what they have available to us.
Yeah.
Volunteer.
So I think you're aware, Canterbury Fire does do medical first response. But it's to stabilize the patient until the ambulance gets there.
Yeah, yeah.
At Pinnacle, Pinnacle Rescue, uh, they, uh, their employees are, are per diem employees, um, that they hire from, that are working, doing full-time jobs in other, other services. So, um, any additional staffing, they, they have, they have ads up all the time, look for help. And, uh, it's just, it's just trying to find that help is, is the problem.
Um. There's a lot, there's a lot to discuss on this and thanks for, um, I think it's really good that, um, Pinnacle raised the question and there's, there's still some time to actually deal with it.
Yes. Yeah, I agree. I think, um, you know, this is, this is a conversation that we all need to have, all three towns and Pinnacle Rescue. So. So my suggestion is to give this a few some thought, um, and, and, you know, we can regroup for the next meeting with the three towns and Pinnacle Rescue.
And how would you suggest we go without thinking about this? So we'll get harder numbers from Pinnacle. Is there anything else that we can use to?
So I mean.
Tell us this, like, what would be a good way to?
Certainly looking at what each option means in terms of its tax increase implication. I think it's, we have to look. I mean, you know, I was just thinking yesterday, again, that, you know, our town is looking at that school tax increase of last year around thirty percent in our December tax bill. So that is in my mind, I think with everything that we do here for the town, is people are looking at a significant tax bill increase already and I don't want us to add to that.
And we can all, that's, yes.
Yes, of course it will. Absolutely.
So we can make our recommendations, but, um, long as we have really good data, people say, no, it's in, you know, we're in, you know, it's important that we have good coverage. Yeah, it's going to, it's going to hit us in the well, if we're willing to pay that, or they'll say, looks like the rest, no.
Yep.
As long as we have good data, I think, um, at the moment, that's the best we can do.
I agree with that. I think that that's probably as a select one. We need to give up. Recommendations.
Yeah, hmm. The next meeting, not until August, correct, up to four?
Yeah, fourteen, 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 fifteen PM. Yeah. So we've got, we'll certainly have a select one meeting before, um, it's going to be discussed.
And I hope, I hope that Pinnacle Rescue will send those numbers out ahead of that. Supposed to be working, did talk with Sean Breck, the head of Pinnacle Rescue. And ask him to deliver those numbers. So he's working on that.
We haven't gotten the minutes from that meeting yet, correct? I was, um, I think it was.
Yeah.
Do we have them available now?
Yeah, they were sent out. Is it going?
Yeah, yeah.
Within the last, yeah, probably three, four days, Beth. You are.
Sorry.
I think you are on the, I think you are on the email list about the, I was.
Yeah, I want to contact, I want to say Kim, I may be mistaken and major event, yeah, I'll get that.
Thank you, Beth. That's correct. All right, anything further? Yeah, stay tuned for.
Yeah, okay.
For much further discussion.
With the old fire station?
Fire station, yeah. That's it. And there is some talk of moving.
Yes.
Uh, it's at this point.
Yeah, Oskoona is, has, has been trying. They're, they're trying to come up with an idea where they're going to expand the fire station where it is now. And so they're, they're unsure and they do, either they were talking about providing, uh, some kind of space for Pinnacle Rescue.
They're up at the intersection of.
Okay, thank you.
Next, Beth. Welcome to Minnesota Record Committee. Yeah, it's got Cal Ripoff over.
So I'm going to try to be really quick. Uh, so, well, you got it, Beth. R three thirty-three dash eight, we require that all municipalities.
Cal, if you can still hear me, whatever you just did, I have no audio now.
Oh, geez.
Sorry.
Now we're really going to have to run.
Okay, how about, um, can you hear me now?
It, are you, you didn't?
What did I? Uh, no, I didn't need it. Can you hear me? Oh, okay.
Can we just look there?
Just calm down.
Can you hear me now?
It's me, Ken.
Can you hear me?
I can, you can hear me.
Yeah. All right, I'm going to try to plug in again. Um, let's see if that kills anything or. Okay, can you still hear me?
I can.
Hey. R three thirty-three dash eight colon three, municipalities are required to have a municipal record committee. We don't have one, we need one. We also need one because we've had a whole list of things that they need to do, including the, uh, uh, retention policy draft of the non-public minutes policy and a whole bunch of other stuff that came up in the last right-to-know seminar that the lawyers, uh, provided. So we need one. Uh, it, the committee must include a select board member, town manager, the clerk, the treasurer, an assessor, and a tax collector.
Right.
So. I guess, I don't, I don't know what we need to do to form a committee besides using, let's form the committee. I'd also like to be on the committee.
I'd love to be on the committee.
And.
I'd like to be on it too, if that's, uh, if no one else wants.
It sounds like that is volunteering, you just select a member on the committee.
They already, yeah.
Okay, so if.
I'm not quite sure why I was, uh, hearing that. Yes, I am.
I was going to make a question. Who was the sacrificial? This side.
So put her head on the.
Have you got all other objections or concerns? And I'm just kind of, it's kind of something to do.
Motion on the committee here.
That's it? Okay, you've got the committee, I will start scheduling things for it and we're done.
Sure, motion sounds great.
Oh, wait, one second, Cal. When this committee forms and it's scheduled, so we have procedures for that? Or do we have to make them as the committee is?
Beth.
Yeah.
You and Ken talked at the same time and I didn't hear either of you, so.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, okay. Okay. Beth, ask that question one more time.
My question was, um, now that the committee will be formed, as soon as we vote in the moment, are there procedures for us, the committee already in effect? Or do we have to come up with ones?
Coming up with new ones.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Same question.
That is the same question. Okay, great.
I mean, we're going to form minutes and agendas and all that, right?
Yes.
Okay. It's going to be coming in our little reports every year from the, yes, okay.
Yeah, it's, it's a whole other committee.
All right, um, cool plan.
Um, this is something.
I'm sorry, were you doing?
No, no.
Okay.
This is something that you had mentioned at the last meeting, you wanted to on the agenda. I don't know if you still want to talk about it. I didn't prepare any information.
No, so the, the only reason I brought it up is just a question on our COOP plan. And I, I seem to remember we redid it five years ago or thereabouts.
Or longer than that.
Think we need to revisit it.
We do. Okay, we do. The, the problem being, uh, the, the amount of time it takes to, to do it.
I, I worked on the COOP plan for the state, the Department of Safety, so.
Yeah, yeah. We, we had actually applied for, we had actually looked into applying for some grants.
No.
And because ours wasn't up to date, you're not eligible. I talked to the fire chief about it to see if it was, and again, it's, it's time and, and.
Yeah.
So, yes, that is on the, on the radar.
Yeah, and that's honestly the thing I wanted to do with this. At least we did a discussion about it, so.
Okay, I'm just going to ask a really silly question. Would you, by COOP, do you mean continuing, continuation of operations plan, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Checking?
Yeah, nope. Thank you for checking. It, um, it, it's been a while, is my memory. That's, that's the reason I was asking.
And who would this affect? Which particular admin of the whole town, select board, committees, or just the town?
So all, all of the above, I guess. It's anybody that's involved in, um, in the town. Yeah, um, certainly police fire, um, select board, um, town administrator.
Yeah.
Yeah, every, everyone that's anybody.
Yeah.
Okay.
It does. Basically covers, covers the operations of the town from A to Z.
Yep. And what do we do if Sam Lake catches fire? What do we do if the library burns down? What do we do if the meeting house burns down?
I can say, and how does one go about?
Yeah, there, there's other portions of it too, uh, um, there's, you know, what if we're, what if our electronic, uh, communications go down?
Yeah.
Um.
Covid.
That covid was, is a perfect example of what if the health, health emergency, natural disasters, it basically covers everything. And, and similar, uh, they used to just call emergency operations plan, now they continue operations and they, they changed. But, but, uh, I want, I asked, uh, fire chief to look into it to see if anybody, other members of the compact had any up-to-date ones. And there are very few that have up-to-date ones. So.
Really?
We're all, we're all kind of saying, oh, this is one of those things that it's like the hazard mitigation plan that, um, you know, we, we really have to update it on a, uh, you know, semi-annual or five-year basis, really.
What was our last one? So you said you looked it up?
Oh, it, it was, I think it was before, it was, it was.
Before covid?
Yeah, it was, I think it was the early two thousands, like two thousand three or two thousand four.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's been a while.
That's a, that's a, that's a must do. And so how do we start, um?
So usually what happens is if, if we do it similar to the hazard mitigation plan, again, we form some kind of committee made up of, of the, uh, to get the interested parties, um, you know, and stakeholders or whatever you want to call them. And, and look at the old plan and then we update it. It's, it's not hard, but it's a lot of work. You know, it's just one of those updating something like that because so much has changed. Yep.
Well, especially with like electronics, you know, when it suddenly, our whole internet system goes down and down or something. The website, our admirable, meant to be designed new website blows up. Anything, um, we would need to do.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes. If I need to host public meetings or, or the different fails.
That would be, I'm not sure everybody can call in on their phone like I'm doing now. Everybody in the room, their phones on speakerphone.
Yeah, we're going to come in for.
How do you come out and rewire us? That's what I'm seeing on his great high-speed broadcasting network and it should be good.
If he wants to come out here and do that, then yes, like, he's welcome to.
Bring the stuff on the move, but I'll see what I can.
Yeah, perfect. All right. I think that brings us to.
What do we do tonight? Do we need to vote this to do or?
Well, we'll look into it, get some information and then I'll bring up, bring it forward at our next meeting.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I do have a couple of things on. Well, I guess, well, I guess, I'll wait till we're busy.
Uh, first item, uh, highway staffing incentives?
I think this was discussed at the last meeting about what we could do to try and convince people to work for us. Uh, I did have a quick discussion with Beth about it. Um, one of those incentives could be that if people live, you know, in a state or a town or somewhere far away, that we do have a facility that, that could help them for a temporary, temporary basis. Employees only, not family members, but employees only. And we could potentially. Meet up there? Up at the Minnesota. Yeah, there's, there's showers, there's kit, there's lockers, beds, uh, things like that. Uh, so if we had to, um, uh, similar to what, uh, Officer Clappius was doing, if they want to come stay for three or four nights a week or something like that, you know, it works. If we got, but we, uh, we haven't had the applications, uh, since the last one. We are, um, going to advertise and call on them, see if that helps. And, uh, some will pursue.
Yeah.
Do the towns offer any, I mean, it seems like, again, if you have a full-time employee or if, if they're full-time and they have benefits and, you know, disability available, that seems like a, a really good incentive. But apparently it's not enough for any towns around us that offer anything else that we're not aware of.
Not a bit of us.
No, yeah. That would be unique, I think. Yeah, yeah.
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 Okay. I think if you have people living there, what else is going on up your municipal center at night? That would have to be part of our discussion, if we want to offset that, but.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, there definitely are implications.
Yeah, hmm, okay.
So you were, oh, mail copies of police fire job descriptions.
Yeah.
I would ask them to review them and if you find any issues, they are quite comprehensive. They're to change from the existing ones. Uh, they've updated and uh, hopefully police chief is worried about it. Um, we want, we want good job descriptions.
Yeah.
We have the ability to waive any of the, any of the, I guess, look for some requirements on the job description if we have a good candidate. But we don't wanna, we wanna set the bar high, I guess, in in, 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 please go.
Yeah. So.
Really intensive. I was really surprised reading through them, how, because they are.
Yeah, yeah, and and as the chief said to me today, need the job descriptions that that usually a, a city the size of H U C there, workers have to put out. Um, but at the same time, we want to set the bar high and and we have the ability, if we go to get a candidate, that, um, we can waive some of the requests, so.
So I did have a couple of questions, uh, reading through them all, when is an appropriate time to ask them? Um, to, and I think I said this at the beginning of the meeting, um, when the chief was giving his report. So at what point will we discuss these? Cause I, I don't know. Questions, I don't know what the best time to ask them or get them answered.
Yep, so, uh, if we can, if we can hit comments, and probably the best way to do it is to make a list and email the police chief and to myself, and then we will try to, uh, assess those at a future meeting.
If you're fairly, um, if you're fairly straightforward and I think we'll easily answer, there's a couple that that will be a part of, um, so, all right, I will type them all and, uh, email them to all parties.
Great. Okay, a couple of things that I know of this.
Right, yes.
Oh.
This is interesting for everyone.
Oh, yes, um, so we had an offer. Yeah, we had an inquiry about a town law, uh, by Ms. Dean Bergen.
Yeah.
Uh, the, you guys gave a, a, I s, we s, contacted her, uh, emailed, phoned, and certified returns to her. We did get the card back that she did get the letter. She has responded. The date that we set for expiration of that offer has expired. Um, so I just wanted to bring that up, let you guys know.
Thank you.
Um, we are not gonna communicate part of the, part of that communication, what there was, that there is an expiration date on the offer, so.
Yep.
In the future, if there are any further offers on property than they need to be watched. Understood?
Yeah.
All right, so she never responded, then, okay.
Correct. Uh, a couple of other old business items, cause he all update, um, I spoke with Eric Baker. We, of staple, there was a check-in for, uh, fifty percent of the, of the cost of the project. Uh, he's gonna buy materials, start building it, and he sees, uh, probably either February or August or September. So we have a fair and in the July, and that is all I know of the decisions so far.
Yeah.
Uh, and I inquired with the contractor, it's gonna be the gutters, going to do the gutters. He has the material to do the gutters on this building, but he injured, um, and he's gonna be out for three or four weeks. So he, I get the, the male, he said he had an injury and so he's gonna, uh, he proceeds probably either legal or August, they get the papers on the stuff.
What's his name again?
Uh, Peter Gladus.
Gladus, yeah.
Um, yeah, and I didn't know about the fair, so that, that he couldn't be doing work in previous.
On Saturday, that would be nice, thank you.
Yeah, yeah. He just started to say they, but but he, he, he doesn't, uh, he's not that sure, yes.
Okay.
Um, then the last thing I have is we have a request from, uh, the central answer planning, uh, is working with the planning board. The planning board, uh, is responsible for the capital approval plan. Uh, they solicited, uh, help from the central answer planning. Uh, planning commission sent us a, a offer, a contract. Yeah, the cost of the town would be two thousand dollars. Um, and commission.
Total for the whole, for a whole city?
Oh, it'd be three thousand dollars, but they, they are looking to get a matching grant uh, in the amount of thousands, so it would be the town within time would pay two thousand dollars. Um, the problem is that the planning board's professional services line is, uh, less than two thousand dollars and, um, and they, and we're getting more extended, uh, legal, the legal bill get from them last month, May was twenty, twenty-one hundred dollars. So they've incurred sixty-five hundred dollars in legal fees so far this year, which they don't have a lot before. Um, but it has to come out of the town's legal fees, which we have a line of two thousand dollars and it is currently overextended. Uh, and we have, we have, uh, huge legal costs that are coming up. So I, I guess I would, and the other part of this is, uh, capital plan is usually based off of a master plan, and the master plan has not been completed yet. So I would recommend that the selectmen, the lot, uh, sign a contract for the capital proof plan this year, and hopefully the planning board will get the master plan done this year and then continue on next year to the.
On the, on the master plan, after all the readings and what they're putting together now, and it seems like they have parts and it will be presented, you said on me, correct?
It should be, yes. That's.
Okay, so that should be all done, yeah. Go off, are we under any legal requirement to have this yet, you know, be way overdue or what happens if we don't do it? We have a contract for this year.
Capital improvement, way overdue on the plan for tomorrow.
No, I know that. I'm just curious if we, if we say, okay, we wanna get the planning for tomorrow done first and we put off the capital improvement, which seems sensible. Are there any consequences to that?
Not at all.
Well then, that's reasonable.
I mean, yeah, yeah. All right. Okay, um, I think the last thing I have is that we need to go into executive session to discuss a personnel. Unless, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm on it.
Um, the only, the only thing I can go, you got the profit and loss.
Yeah.
Yes.
It, I would say, please review it. If you have any questions, bring it forward for the next meeting.
Okay.
Uh, we're at the half mark, and, uh, this is when we really start, start looking at it. And, and if you, um, I have some concerns and I'm sure you do too, so please let me know and we'll do our best to, uh, figure out what to do.
On the whole, actually, though, there were of concern, um, and that I won't bring up right now, um, it seemed that a lot of the line items were, it said, you know, uh, percent, however it's worded, percent used or percent, we, how targeted this, a lot of them were like forty-five percent. So it seems like a lot of the line items were, well, there were a couple that were for a variety of reasons, but it seems like on the whole, most of them were pretty good.
Yeah, I think, again, we, a lot of the line is looking good, but, um, we're happy to be here and, uh, as the fire chief said today, both the engine and the tanker broke down and that's a costly, the highway department's got a truck that's, that's going to service, um, so there are, are some things, you know, uh, we try to budget what we, what we think might happen and, but yes, overall, I think we're not in bad shape.
Yeah, we backed up this, so if we need to add at some point or if we want to add a special line item for a planning board for legal, um, I mean, obviously that'll be part of a much bigger discussion, but how does that, what's the mechanism for actually making that happen?
So.
Did you say add a line item for, for legal?
Yes, that would be a budget, that would be a budget for two thousand twenty-five.
Okay.
But discussions that, we started discussions in really September, um, and
Okay, that's important.
That would be the time, and what we do is for the new budget, for the, the proposed two thousand twenty-five budget, we would add a lot. And that's not, that's not complicated.
Okay, good, thank you.
Yep. All right, ready?
Yep.
So I'm gonna make the motion that we adjourn to executive session to.
Okay.
Hold in favor?
I.
Thank you, Edgar.
Yeah, thank you.
Bye, Edgar.
Bye. You're gonna end the video.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks for the reminder, though.
Yeah.
See ya.